Regular session of the Sierra Madre Planning Commission for June 5th. Danny, can we do a rule call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Pevsner?
Here.
Commissioner Pascal?
Here.
Goldstein?
Here.
Fryarmann Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Buckles?
Here.
Vice Chair Desai? He is absent. Chair Pendleberry?
Here. Next item on the agenda is for the approval of the agenda. Do I have any comments?
I will so move.
Anybody wish to second?
I second.
Excellent. So it's been moved and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Passes unanimously.
Chair Pendleberry, can I just make a quick reminder to make sure that everyone, that your mics are on when you speak and that you speak into the mic?
That's right. Directly into the mic. Okay, approval of the minutes is the next item.
Oh.
I have a couple of typos. In line thirty-one, Commissioner Goldstein moved to approve the agenda. That would be the minutes, since we're in the section of the minutes called minutes. And then on line eighty-three, there are two "does." Manager Motz Mado explained the "the" design process. And on line ninety-five, it says, "Action agreed by consensus to continue to allow," and I think the rest of the sentence is missing. What would the rest of the sentence be?
It should be, "To allow the applicant to review other design options."
Those are the only errors I found.
All right, with the exception of that...
With the exception of that, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Excellent. Anybody seconding? Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No one is opposed. All right. Then, at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning any item that is not listed on the agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes your participation and input. When addressing the Planning Commission, please begin by stating your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than four minutes in order to provide for an orderly and timely meeting. Anybody wish to address the Planning Commission? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sparks. I live at 501 North Sunnyside Avenue. I'm here to express my three largest concerns regarding the housing development at Madre de la Rosa. Number one, regarding open space. The general plan calls for the preservation of open space. Madre de la Rosa is the last large undeveloped open space in Sierra Madre. Once that space is lost, it's gone forever. Secondly, water. Our groundwater source, the Raymond Basin, is nearly crippled by trying to meet our current needs in the continuing drought. To add fifty more households to our water demand would severely mismanage this resource. And lastly, the strain on city services. In the same context as water, this housing development project would put an added strain on our already overburdened city services and infrastructure. And it's unrealistic to assume that the additional revenue from the development and property taxes will be sufficient to sustain the increased burden as the present city budget is already extremely difficult to balance. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Number two.
Heather Allen on Grove. I wanted to express some frustration I had, I'm having with the water situation and how it relates to the upcoming development that we're facing, not only at the monastery but possibly in other parts of town as well. As many of the residents know, our rates have gone up and are going to go up again in July. And at times, I'm dealing with yellow or brown water. And I feel badly that I have to waste it, you know, letting it run through the tap, throwing it out in the lawn, waiting for the tap to clear. And I'm sure, I'm thinking, there must be a lot of other people that are dealing with this problem as well. I don't want to drink the water, and I hate having to pay more money for bottled water. And so anyway, I was doing a little research, and I found this article, and I thought it would benefit not only the Planning Commission but the residents at large. I just wanted to share a few paragraphs from it. This is from the Mountain View News, but it was taken directly from a City of Sierra Madre e-blast. So that's where it comes from. And it's dated in October twenty-sixth of last year. And it says that several Sierra Madre water customers have contacted the city with questions and concerns regarding water coming from their taps that is either yellow or orange in color. The discoloration of the water is a direct result of the change from our deep well water treated with free chlorine to the use of MWD chloraminated water. The difference in chemistry between the two sources has caused a scouring effect on our distribution system. While the imported water has zero iron and manganese when it leaves the MWD treatment plant, the discoloration is caused by iron precipitating from the city's older steel pipelines and the galvanized plumbing of many of the city's residences and businesses. The iron is what's giving the water its coloration. Until the city's water system acclimates to the new water, incidents of discoloration will continue. Water Department staff has estimated that these incidents may continue for as long as six months. I would just like to note that we're past that six months. The city is dedicated and committed to water conservation. We understand water is a limited resource that must be carefully managed. Okay, with all of that in mind, what's really concerning me is I'm hearing about forty to sixty units possibly at the monastery. And I don't know how many residents are aware of it or what, but my concern is if we allow this kind of building, gosh, how long are we going to be on the MWD? I'm concerned that, you know, we may be permanently stuck with higher rates and rationing and yellow or brown water. So my request is that we please stop this development. And my understanding is it's the Planning Commission that can begin that process for a building moratorium. And I am asking anyone at home, if you feel the same way, please come down and voice your concern because they are your commissioners and the council people are your, you are their constituents, and they need and deserve to hear how you feel. And, you know, some people complain when they pay their water bill down at the front desk, but that doesn't do any good. You need to come down and speak about it. And I hope the Planning Commission gives this some thought, and I hope the residents take an active interest in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Barry Gold. I live at 441 Ramona Avenue here in Sierra Madre. I'm a relatively new resident to Sierra Madre. I've lived here for two and a half years. For the twenty years prior to that, I lived in Arcadia. The reason I moved here, I am sure, is obvious to all of you because we all fell in love with the atmosphere, the feel, the way this city has its small-town rural feel that you don't get anywhere else. And I'm really afraid that that's going to change because I did see where I used to live in Arcadia, that change happened over those twenty years. And it's not a good thing for a town like ours. So I want you to consider, please, two things. First, adding additional homes at this time is not a very good idea considering our water problems. And I know you've heard this many times, but I don't think we can hear it enough times. And the second thing is that when it's appropriate in the future and our water problem is alleviated and we do decide we can allow more building, we must make sure that that building is done to conform with the feel of our neighborhood and not to change it so that it won't have to move somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing no one, I guess we'll go to the first item.
We'll have Letizia Cardoza, senior planner, to introduce the item.
Okay. Actually, I'll move this one.
Good evening, Chair Pendleberry and Commissioners. The next item is the Certificate of Appropriateness, fourteen oh one, to allow the addition of a two-hundred-and-nine-square-foot storage room to the Hart Park House Senior Center at 222 West Sierra Madre Boulevard. As you recall, at the May fifteenth meeting, you reviewed the project and continued to give the city an opportunity to add some articulation along the west and north elevations of the proposed addition. Commissioner Buckles, at the time, offered to assist staff with the revised design, and he has done so, and will present the proposed changes to you tonight. The alternatives, once you review the proposed changes and discuss it, your alternatives tonight, upon considering those changes, is approve the application based on the exhibits submitted, deny the application identifying the findings that cannot be made, and the basis for rejecting those findings, and continue the subject project. At this time, I will, oops, show you the proposed changes. This is the west elevation, and we can also show you the north elevation. And I think I will allow Commissioner Buckles, if you'd like, to go ahead. Staff is recommending approval to the Planning Commission, and the findings are the same findings that were provided in the May fifteenth, at the May fifteenth meeting. So if you'd like to go ahead and present it.
This design drawings are pinned to paper on my behalf of the city from what I feel that I heard from the other Planning Commissioner members in our last meeting. Okay, thanks. Okay. So this is not per se my design. This is what I feel that I heard in the last meeting. So if anybody has recommendations, I'm more than willing to accept them as well. And so on that west elevation, I have drawn the addition with an additional window, and that window is the same size and depth as the existing window just to the right of it. So you'll see the, you can see at the top of the elevation, it says, "New Roof and Existing Roof." So everything to the left is the new addition. And also is depicted shrubbery and plants matching the existing ones further down the Now I'll move to the north elevation, I think. On the north elevation, because the wall will be seen through the amphitheater, I felt that, that it was expressed that that wall needs to have some type of decoration or fenestration. But in lieu of a window, because the window would be so low because of the elevation of the paving at that side, we've depicted a wood trellis that's inset into the wall. And that is similar to what you see in the wood trellis on the south side of the building and with a false, oops, wrong way. This is neat. There's that wood beam right there that's recessed into the wall, and that matches on another elevation. The existing concrete of the stage right there, as you can see, is about five foot six below the roofline. So if there was a window there, it would be right there at the floor line. It didn't seem appropriate. So this trellis would be seen through the amphitheater door opening, the ban shell door opening from the amphitheater. And I didn't draw the east elevation because the air conditioning units are going to be right there, and they're going to be covering up that stucco wall anyway, so there was really no need for any type of fenestration or decoration. So that's about it.
Do we have any comment on the design?
I have a question.
Do we have any questions on the design? I'm sorry.
There may be some public comment.
That's fine.
Are you asking for us now?
I can certainly ask for you now. Let's open this to the public.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Amy Putnam, and I'm the vice chair of the Senior Community Commission. And I just wanted, as did several, two others of our Commissioners, come and talk to you a little bit tonight about the storage unit, what our intention was relating to the storage unit. And we wanted to point out to you that when you considered this in May, our chairman, Naina Bartoli, was in fact in the audience and was here for the purpose to come up and talk with you regarding the thoughts behind the storage unit. And because of the audio problems that were occurring at that time, she missed her opportunity and wasn't able to come. So tonight, we are here to do what we had hoped would have been discussed from us or shared with you last week as you were making your decisions. Naina unfortunately could not come tonight, and we were only made aware of this this afternoon at our Senior Community Commission meeting that you would in fact be discussing this. So we're here to give you our ideas relating to the storage unit. We very much appreciate the work and the thought that you have put into the adjustments to the storage unit. Our intention was to make it as useful as possible for the community, for the civic groups that use the Hart Park House, which has been designated as a community building. And when it was remodeled, the storage area in the building was minimized. It became obvious that we did need quite a bit more storage area to accommodate the civic groups that utilize the building, excuse me, and also city tables and chairs that are in the building that need to be moved in and out for various functions when the building is in fact rented out to outside events. So you know also that the storage unit has come up in other forms over the last year. There was a discussion regarding the bathrooms and part of the bathrooms that are on the east-south-east side of the Hart Park House be converted into a small storage unit. This, however, after considering several alternatives at the Senior Commission, was the alternative that we felt really would be the best regarding a storage unit, access into the Hart Park House, security relating to the items in the Hart Park House. So those, we carefully thought this through and were very pleased with the design as it was presented to you last week. But again, we didn't have an opportunity to come up and talk to you about this during your decision-making process, so that's why we're here tonight. And with that, I'd like Jackie Pergola, who's a Senior Community Commission, to come up and discuss some thoughts that we talked about today at our commission meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and I appreciate all the wonderful work that you are all doing to keep our town just super. A storage unit is a storage unit is a storage unit. You start putting windows into a storage unit, you lose the square footage. It's only two-hundred-and-nine square feet. We need every inch of this space for the amount, I don't know if you realize, the amount of tables and chairs and podiums and paraphernalia that all of the town people, outside people use for the Senior Center. And because we have no place to put that, they are in the main room. They take up space where it could be utilized for classes, for bigger meetings, for all kinds of things for the city. When we're talking about a window in there, we're talking about a window that will be very low and will just be an invitation for somebody to walk by and start banging on it and break it. We're also talking about light and possible moisture that could come in through that window. It will also encroach on the square footage of that. And this evening, I saw that wonderful trellis, which is a great idea, but now we're talking about recessed, which is also going to push in some of our square footage. We do not want to work against you. We want to see if we can get cooperation with you and come up with a more viable idea with landscaping possibly, or a trellis that's on the outside of the wall, just so that we don't have to lose any of that square footage. We really, really need that. And as I said before, we really would like to cooperate with you on this. The Senior Commission has set aside this money. We are not asking the city to provide any of it. And we have gone over it in our commission meetings many, many times. And we really feel that we need every bit of space that we can have and that we need the security of not having windows in that space. Thank you.
I was going to commend Matt on his effort here, and I still will. I think he did a fine job. I think it may have been a misappropriation of time and a lack of, a lack of communication with those people who were driving this thing initially. And I want to, what do I want to say? At any rate, I don't know what your opinion is of working with these ladies in the Senior Center.
She, it sounds like the object to the window on the west elevation, right there.
Yeah, most of it. As we had discussed, I'm sorry. Sure.
Does that window take square footage out of the building? I said, does that window take square footage out of the building?
It would take square footage out of that storage room. And the room, the storage is not a unit. The storage is an addition to a historic building. But yes, it would because the windows are recessed nineteen inches, nineteen-inch depth.
Yeah.
So yeah, it would take room out of there.
Well, I might suggest that if you wish to continue with this process, that you might talk to these ladies and see if there isn't some time that you can all get together and have some conversation. Or we can...
No, I think what we ought to do is...
The problem I have is, the ladies came up from the Civic Committee, I realize that. This is a city building.
Right.
A historic city building.
Right.
That's what we're trying to keep it looking like.
Right.
Okay? So it's not really, to me, it's not the fact that we're trying to steal space for them to put another table in there. It's the fact that we're trying to keep the building as close to being historic as possible. I believe that was what the conversation was at the last city, at the Planning Commission meeting. So I think this design looks fine, in my opinion, but, you know.
And I agree with Kevin in that the building has gone through additions, but the additions have been designed appropriately so that they blend in with the original winery historic building. As you walk around the building, you see that there's symmetry, all the elements match. It doesn't look like there's an addition.
Well, as we discussed last time, this is a civic building. The city owns this building.
Right.
And I realize that you have raised your funds and you have, you're contributing the money to the city. But if this building is, if it's a shed stuck on the side of the building, is that, is that what you want to see in a city building? And unfortunately, it seems like we are getting away from what the founding fathers wanted. But anyway, I know Jackie. Please, I'm going to open it again to public hearing.
Thank you, thank you. We don't want a shed on there either. And we're very proud of the additions that have been done to the Hart Park House. It is an historical building, but because it has been altered so many times, very little of the original building remains there. We do want to keep the same look and keep it very nice, but why do we have to have a window to do that? If it is the same material that is used in other parts of the building, the same landscaping that is used around there, why invite problems with the addition by having to have a window in there? It just doesn't seem to make sense. It's a storage unit, but it is being built into the building as nicely and as smoothly a transition as we could possibly hope to make, but just minus that window. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have comments?
Can I just ask a question on process? So it's a city building, they raise the funds independently, they pay the construction costs.
That's what I understand, yes.
Is it deeded over then to the city, or who owns what?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it is a city-owned property, and so, and it's going to remain a city-owned property.
So there's documentation that they pay the bills and whatever improvements they've made are owned by the city? Will that be documented?
I, I don't, as I sit here today, I don't know what the documentation is.
So I think before I can vote on this, I need clarification on that because if they're paying the bill, we need to know who owns the building.
Well, the city owns the building.
Okay, so then all improvements they pay for become owned by the city.
Sinmin, our Public Works Director, can probably address that.
Can we hear from you, Bruce?
The building is currently owned by the city, and it will remain in the city's ownership. The city will administer a design-build project on this, and it will be paid for by the seniors. It's as simple as that.
I still open for public input?
We were not open, but certainly I'll open again to public input.
Yeah, sorry for coming in late. Growing up in town, I'd seen the building go through a lot of changes, and I understand that maybe a fourth of the roof is historical. And that was according to Don Watts, who used to serve on city council. So as far as historical, eh, I'm not even sure how much the fireplace is historical. I often wondered why, when they did the first revision, that storage wasn't planned. That was the time to plan it. So we kept on going through changes over the years, and I don't know. The Rose Float House had to put in their own storage instead of dragging things back and forth. I just don't see this as the addition to put on to the Hart Park House. I think there can be some other ways to go around of finding the type of storage that's necessary, or if it even isn't necessary. I really don't know how much of the building really is in use. And hopefully the seniors still have that amount of money. I think they wanted to do a sound system, a television system, so maybe that's a separate entity of money spent. But I just don't see, and maybe I'm incorrect, I didn't look to see if it's revised, that they're not going to move any of the electrical or the air conditioning HPC pelling. But I just don't think this is the right fit. I think it can come back and maybe relook to see what other areas of the building that can be made to make a nice flow instead of just plop right there and tear out a section just because it's an afterthought over all these years, in my opinion. Thanks.
All right then. Closing the public hearing to the public. Do we have comments?
I don't think they should be forced to have a window they don't want. If they want to bring back another design, they can bring back another design.
Yeah.
It's fine. Matt doesn't want to spend any more time on it, that's understandable.
They can come back with another design.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be...
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Well, my only question is, is that if this is a city building, I don't care who basically is using it. Just because they raised the funds, that doesn't mean they get to change it to whatever they want it to be. It's still a city building, okay? So I don't know how, what the process has been in the past, who's put the money up to make the changes on the thing. But if it's come before us, our input was that we want to keep it looking somewhat towards the original design of the building. So that's just my two cents.
Yep.
I pay for that myself, too.
I think that the recommendation is that Matt came up with...
I, I think that, 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 the recommendations that Matt came up with were really sensible because although there's been lots of changes to the historic fabric of this building, there's not that much that's historic left. You still want, it's still, I think that there needs to be an integrity to the building so that it looks like it all belongs together. And to add on this addition where you just have this long blank wall, just makes the building, I just think it looks inappropriate as a way to, to work on a building which is designated to be a historic resource in, in our town. I thought the changes that you made, made a lot of sense in terms of how it looks. I, I think just extending out a long blank wall there is, is not an appropriate addition to this building. And I think this is a simple change that makes it look as if it, it kind of belongs. And I have one other choice, question which has the, that trellis on the north side, is that, does that also take square feet out of the building?
Well, the, the trellis is within a six-inch pocket recess in the wall.
So that wouldn't make the wall move inside?
Well, yeah. In that area, it pushes it in six inches.
The whole wall?
Yeah.
Could that just be put on the outside without being recessed in? I mean, could you kind of put that beam on the outside and?
Yeah, it, it could be a flush wall with the beam above.
Mm-hmm. Couple of columns. Some kind of column, some kind of.
Some sort of trim or something? I mean, I think that, that would give the same essential look without taking away any, any room from the inside of the building.
I, I, I like that.
And I think that would.
And still do the trellis, yeah.
But that, that's not the spot where they're talking about the storage space lost.
Well, there was.
That's part of it.
Space there, too. I mean, I think that would be a, a simple solution to, to reducing the amount of, of space that's lost inside, at least that six-inch strip.
I agree.
In terms of the inset window, I don't really know. I can't see a way to kind of inset it partway with a curvier, I think.
Right.
And I don't know what other kind of thing you could do to offer some articulation on this addition to the, to, to, to that wall that would stop it from looking really awkward and inappropriate.
Uh, anybody else? Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
Good luck with the suggestions. I, I kind of don't, I don't, I don't disagree with the people who raised the money and willing to do the work on this, that square footage is square footage, they need it. And I remember the first time this building came around for revision, which the inside restoration, I think, actually looks pretty darn good for the money, the budget they were given. And at the time, that was one of the discussions, like, you know, is this all we get for our money, essentially? That's, at least that's what I thought. And that was one of the constraints, was how much money we could get to even do the remodel. And I think they accomplished a great amount on the inside. So the window or not the window, to give them the square footage they want is not a deal breaker for me. I don't mind the trellises. I think something could be, done something cosmetically on the outside to maybe take away from that window not being there. But I think we should try and make every effort to give them what they want, which is the square footage for storage. If you've ever been in the building, it's actually quite nice. And they, they accomplish, they've accomplished a lot with a very little bit of square footage. And I think it serves the community well. I'm not sure the historical character for one window is worth it for me.
All right. As I've indicated in the past, um, this is a city building. And I think it ought to be, I, I think all the buildings in the city ought, that, that city-owned ought to be treated with, with an amount of, of integrity. The window, as far as, as far as the placement, the far as the, the rhythm that, that is created by the windows there, it should have something on the side. Again, it may be, maybe it's a pocket of some sort, or maybe there's, there's some sort of, some sort of element around the outside of it that would give it that rhythm that we're, we're looking for, similar to the, uh, the trellis on the end. But I think, I think these buildings, the, the drawings we were given initially were so brief and so, and so basic that, um, if it has to come before the planning commission, it ought to be treated such, and it ought to be given the, the, uh, the, uh, you know, the dedication that, that is required to do that. And to have a, to have a simple plan come before it. I don't think your plan works very well myself. I think the small door in the, in the, in the office that you have is really inaccessible as far as getting tables and chairs and stuff in and out of that building. And that's all I've been given. So I don't know what your, what your plan is at this point. And I still don't know, because all I've got are elevations now. So, um, I, I don't know that there's been a lot of thought on how you actually move the furniture around inside that space. Uh, and if it's a, if it's a big thing where you're moving all the stuff all the time and, and, um, you know, I don't, I don't know if this location actually works well for you. I realize what you want. I realize how it is, how, how, but the. So anyway, um, that's my take on this thing. Um, I, I think it was a little less than completely thought out when it was originally given to us. So I'm, I'm happy to see these drawings and thank you, Matt. Uh, good job. Do we have anything to say? Do we have any? Any kind of?
I think that, that if you look at the findings that were required to make, they're on page two and three of this. There's two of them. And I'm having a little trouble making the second one, which it will not adversely affect and will be compatible with the use and exterior of the historic landmark.
Okay. So you don't feel they made that finding?
I'm having trouble making that particular finding.
Sure, sure.
If there, if there isn't some kind of articulation like a window on that side of the building, because it does affect the outside of this building.
Okay.
And I think, believe it makes it look, it's not appropriate.
All right.
Without something else.
Then, um, do we want to, what do we wish to do? Danny, what, what would you suggest?
Well, you can, um, either allow for redesign, or you may take a, uh, make a motion on, on the project.
Uh, would you ladies care to stand, to come forward and give us your opinion on redesign? Or you want us to vote on it tonight?
My, my opinion at this point in time is, um, that we did think this through quite carefully. And we, we three do and have used the Hart Park House significantly, not only with the seniors, but also with the other civic organizations that we belong to in town. The Historical Society uses it, Rotary uses it, Civic Club uses it. Um, there are other groups in town who, Garden Club, uh, other groups that use it. And as far as moving the tables and chairs and the logistics and where the door is, we have gone through that with the door, with the tables and the chairs and the doors and where the door is and how to get it in and out. And this is the most logical plan that, um, was presented that we tried to work with relating to the storage.
Okay.
So we worked really hard on that. Um, the other thing relating to the window, again, um, I understand your concern about keeping the rhythm going. Um, could, could shrubbery, uh, perhaps substitute for a window? Or trellis, as you have suggested for the north side, um, substitute for a window? We're just, we're not only speaking for the seniors ourselves, we're speaking for the other community groups who are utilizing this facility as it has been designated by the community to be utilized. So, um, those.
That's really not carte blanche to, to, you know, again, what we have are, tonight we have two elevations that you don't, that you, that you didn't participate in and you don't approve of at this point. Um, we don't have a plan presented by, we, we don't have a package of information as the planning commission should receive. I mean, we're not, we haven't.
That would have been something that would have come from.
If I could just mention one thing.
Public Works.
Thank you. Uh, what, what you're proposing then is your previous design. And I, and you haven't accepted this one, and that's fine, really, and I'm okay with that. But I think at this point, that's where we're at. We're back to their original design.
There isn't a design, which we don't have any information on.
Well, it's the, the old one, it might still be on here. Well, there's the elevation.
All right.
That's their original design.
Is it?
There, yeah, there. And there.
Okay, go back.
Well, that's existing.
That's existing. Yeah.
Okay, so that's their design that we now need to either vote on or?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, that.
All right.
There.
Then, and do we have a plan?
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, uh, because I was hearing, um, uh, statements being made that I thought, well, you, you don't understand that we do have a long history with this building, not only from the standpoint of the senior community commission, but also from the standpoint that we're quite involved in this community and do live a lot of our life in the Hart Park House and utilize facilities there. So, um, and of course, we all recognize that the deficit is that we don't have adequate storage for, uh, the community. So.
So I think what you're hearing is there's not a proposal before us that we could vote on other than the one that was previously submitted. So I, my sense is I can't take a poll for you, but I don't think you have the votes. So the question is, do you want us to vote on that, which would be a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Or do you want to go back and take another look at redesign, taking into account what feedback you do and don't like from what's been there? I can't speak for the other commissioners. Depending on how a trellis were deployed on the other side, it might work for me. Um, you're going to have to get it deployed without the use of space the way you want. But if it was put in front of us with a complete package, that's something that you could resubmit if you wanted to. But that's your choice. Or, or you could ask us to vote on the previous design, which I don't think.
Okay, well, here, here is the problem that we're facing actually as senior commissioners, was that, um, we met this afternoon and this, this didn't actually even come to us during our meeting this afternoon.
That's fine, you don't have to take this design, it's not, this was a gift that Matt gave you. You don't have to take it.
But, but what I'm saying is, we, um, we would like to be part of the conversation, a significant part of the conversation.
Yeah, seriously.
You should be the entire conversation. You should bring us a plan.
You should have been part of it from last time we met.
And I, I personally, um, felt
the problem I have with the disconnect. Excuse me, the problem I have with the disconnect was at the last meeting, we basically said, this isn't enough of a design. And then basically, we tried to redesign it the way we thought it should look for the benefit of the city.
Okay, I get that, I understand.
So, okay, you don't like that design, we'll give it back to you. But that means you have to redesign it, because as gold, Commissioner Goldstein says, if we vote on this right now, I'm pretty sure we know how this is going to go.
I think, I, I, I'd like to reiterate something else and say about projects like this, which is that our, our, I'm sure I can speak for all commissioners, would say we have a lot of respect for, for the people who use the building. We understand that the building is very valuable to the city. But it's not really what we vote based on. It, we don't base on the uses, we, we base on the, the physical building. And, and our, what, what we're charged with is looking at the physical buildings in the city as they come to us and, and determining whether they're appropriate and meet the rules that were given. And, and as much as I think, yes, I can understand that, that it's used by a lot of people, it's very useful, you need storage. Still, we're tasked with, with what the building looks like and how it fits into the environment and how it fits into the rules about historic buildings. That's our job.
And, and we certainly understand that.
And so, as much as I respect what it's used for, we also are kind of the, the place where the buck on, on, on the visual look stops. And that's what we're tasked with. And we're tasked with, in this case, making sure that even though there's been a lot of historic changes to this building, that new changes still match with what we have. And I, and I don't think that this change matches.
Their serious quality, that they're meant to last for a long time.
Yeah, and, and so, so, so the building, every change that makes, you know, can be there for another fifty years.
And we, we understand that.
And so, we, we think that it needs to really, I, I think that it really needs to, to kind of step up and match the rest of the building in a better way than a long blank wall really doesn't match it in its, in its.
Admittedly, it's only storage, but it's not, it's part of the building.
I, I did hear, when I watched this on the television, um, after you had your meeting, um, one of you, and I cannot remember who it was, who brought up the point that it had Professor Hart actually built the storage unit to store his wine. There would not be a window there, because of course, the window takes away from the integrity of the storage. So, um, I, I found that a very interesting comment. It was just kind of passed over. And, um, so I, you know, all I can say is that we've been working with, um, Bruce Simmons and his group and, uh, regarding the designs, if you need better designs, I, I can't speak for Bruce.
Well, there's a, there's a package that is to be presented to the planning commission with the drawings and the criteria and everything else.
Okay, well, we had faith in the city that they would do that for us.
Yes.
So if, if that was deficient, then we, we'd have to discuss that with the city itself. It was deficient, you're saying?
It was insufficient.
Deficient.
Deficient, yes.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I, I don't know what to say. Do you know what to say, Ms. Jackie?
Take another run at it.
Yeah, I think that's about it, take another run.
No, and I, I think that we should. We, we went along with staff and they have done the drawing. So obviously you all need more than what the staff could, did provide for us.
And different, and different.
And we would be very happy.
Okay, yes.
I think that we should do that, because we'll be glad to.
Is this a staff of the civic club or the senior citizens commission? Or is this city staff?
City staff.
Then you need, you need to make sure that you demand more city staff. You go back and go, listen, your commission won't let us do this because these drawings aren't good enough. You make them step up, because they're not doing their job. Okay? That's the way I look at it.
Okay, that's, that's the way you look at it, and we will now look at it in a different light. But, but I really would appreciate if you would give us time to present a more detailed and maybe some other ideas.
I, Elaine Aguilar, city manager, city staff. I also am the department head for the community services department, where this project originated from. I think it might be helpful if we explained that this project went through not just one commission, but two commissions. Probably six meetings altogether between the two commissions. At least, I'm going from memory, six, seven, eight options were looked at for how to get storage on this building. This was the one that those other two commissions, uh, community services and the city council, you're right, also went before the city council. And this is the final option that the city council and two commissions approved with. It does have a really tight budget. What you have received is all that we have been allocated the funds to do. This is a very tight budget. The seniors have raised their own money to build this. There isn't money for an architect. You notice there weren't detailed plans and specs, because there isn't money for that. This is a true volunteer effort, a group of wonderful volunteers that have raised the money. And there just isn't the funds to do what you would normally see in the, in the full-blown plans and specs and draw, and drawings. There just isn't, there isn't the funding for that.
How do they know they're going to get the quality they expect?
So.
How do they know that?
What was that?
How do they know they're going to get the quality they expect?
If you don't have a set of drawings that somebody's going to build from. Uh, Director Edman is going to be supervising, it's, I'm trying to think what he calls it, it's a design-build project. We will be working with the contractors as we go through this to make sure it looks good. We're going to be personally supervising the construction. We've done other design bids.
Who do we go to when it turns out differently than, than, uh, they're all expecting it to turn out like?
Well.
Who do we go to? Which, which of the crowd did you?
It's going to, it's going to be the public work staff and the contractor and the city manager.
How do we hold the city? This is our commission, it's, it's a city commission. But it's basically a public person's commission, okay? How do we go back and hold the city responsible if you're going to let this go through and it's going to be a bad project?
Well, no, we're not, we're not.
Or if it's not a bad project, how do you, how do you, how do you justify allowing this to occur when everything else is presented to the city, the city planning department, the city planning commission has to meet a whole criteria of, of elements that, that, um, takes hours to put together? With, with a whole series of, of exhibits that have to be put together?
What I can do is, is try to go back to the council, see if they'll allocate additional funds to give what it is the commission is, is asking for. That's option number one. Very tight budget, as you're aware. Option number two is to permit, is to permit the, um, community services and the senior commission to have another go at this based upon the recommendations that we've heard this evening and see if we can give you something similar to the drawings you've received, but something that they feel comfortable submitting.
If they're similar to the drawings that we've received from the original.
No, no, not the original, I'm talking the ones you received this evening. That, about that.
These were done to help.
Right. But something I'm seeing, that, that type with a bit more detail on it, as opposed to what you have before.
Can I, I, I just, may I?
Sure.
Okay, so I think we are way off point here. Okay. The, respectfully, the issue of budget is not in. Respectfully, the issue of budget is not in play tonight and whether there are or aren't resources. I'm sorry.
I respectfully disagree, but I agree. I hear you.
Okay. There are two findings that need to be made here. I will read them aloud if that would be helpful, but I don't think we make either one.
I know, and that's why I'm saying, give the commission some time.
Okay, so if we don't make the findings, whether the drawings are detailed enough or specific enough, et cetera, is a secondary issue. The first thing that has to happen is we have to make the findings. Then we make the findings, and then we can decide whether this is a project we want to pursue.
Right.
So all this other stuff, there's nothing going on here other than can we make these findings?
Right.
We made a suggestion, this is in the spirit of no good deed goes unpunished, so we learn, and you don't want it, don't take it. We want you to have the storage, that's something we want to have, but we want to have a building that everybody's proud of. So we need to make the findings. That's it.
I agree, and we're almost there, and I'm not saying-
Okay, but all these other issues of budget and timing and resources and city and all this emotional stuff, we just gotta make the findings. That's it.
I agree, and I agree, and I thought, though, it would be helpful to know some of the history of this project and why it came to you the way it did.
Doesn't help it make the findings.
And to respectfully request some additional time. We can take it back to the Senior Commission and Community Services Commission.
And we're asking, we're asking right now if you would like additional time.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's how this began.
Right. Exactly, and we're just requesting some additional time. I think we can get there as long as the commission isn't expecting, you know, full-blown design construction plans. That would be a little difficult for us, but we can give you more than what you have received. I can give you that commitment.
So let's imagine, let's imagine that we approve this, and let's imagine that it goes into the Building Department for approval. You're going to have to have construction documents with that.
Right, the contractor will prepare those, that's correct.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if you would like, I could have Director Enman give you detail on how that process happens. I don't know if it would be helpful with the design bill process is, so you can have some commitment that there will be, the contractor won't be just, you know, putting boards up and nailing things together.
So the Building Department will not have to issue a building permit without drawings that have been approved by a structural engineer.
Correct, correct. And the contractor prepares those, correct.
All right.
Mm-hmm, right. We would not do a project, a city project, without building permits.
My problem with this is, is this should, we should not treat you as any differently than any other citizen out there. Somebody comes to us, they want to change a historic house, it should be exactly the way it would be with them.
We understand.
I could tell us what the drawings cost, but you better bring good ones in here. We're not gonna, we can't do the finest, we're not gonna vote on it.
We've heard you, we've heard you, and I think at a certain point, staff hears you and, you know, we understand.
Thank you very much. It's not really open to public comment, but you wanna comment again?
Since it's a public building, and since the money is not going anywhere and legally liable, I'm not sure who would be held accountable if we didn't have proper building permits submitted to the city, why not open it up for the volunteers in town that are architects to submit what they can for the Hart Park House?
Well, I don't know.
So we're talking about volunteers, let's give it some time, open it up and have volunteers submit the proper designs for the building.
Fabulous idea.
Okay.
Okay, so what do we have to do about stabbing?
I think we have a motion to continue to add an insert.
Right, right.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No one? All right, then, let's have the second item tonight.
Okay, the next item is the Conditioned Use Permit 1307, and this was the request by AT&amp;T Wireless to install a rooftop stealth wireless facility consisting of 11 panel antennas and associated equipment onto an existing commercial building.
Mr. Director, I'm gonna have to recuse myself, as I worked on that building some time ago.
Excuse me, yes?
Thank you. I don't have many issues in here, all right? Who would like to be chair? Throw your hand in the air.
Oh, hammer it.
There we go.
That was the last hammer, eh?
I'll wait until he-
At your May 15 meeting, this is your last meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed five design options, and the commission selected option five, the fifth option design. So what we have before you is simply the resolution to approve the CUP using option five. And you did agree, drawings are not before you, but you did agree that we would work with staff, that it would be option five.
And just to clarify, that was the one with the sort of-
It was these, yeah.
Smoke stacks once.
Smoke stacks, yeah, right, exactly. Just so, just so we know that option five is the option we thought it was.
Right. The applicant is here, however, you know, I believe you had discussion at the last meeting about this, but he's available if you had any other questions. Otherwise, the resolution's before you.
Any questions from the council?
No, I remember where we were at the last point, so.
Yeah, so, somebody wanna make a motion?
We have to open it to public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, this time I'd like to open a public hearing on the AT&amp;T antenna.
Resolution.
Resolution 14-07. See nobody in the audience coming forward? Let's bring back to the commission.
I would like to make a motion to approve PC Resolution 1407.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, it's unanimous.
All right.
Thank you.
When will the good people have their bandwidth?
By the end of the year.
Bandwidth by the end of the year, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So you'll be able to download data on your AT&amp;T mobile phone at the only place in town?
Perfect.
There you go.
Okay, on to the next.
Thank you, I'll introduce this next item. It's your continued review of the General Plan Update Document, and before you this evening is Chapter Three, which consists of Hazard Preservation, Chapter Three, which is Hazard Preservation. It consists of Fire Safety, Flood, Landslide, Seismic Safety, and Noise, Sections One through Four. And this draft document was recommended by the General Plan Steering Committee at their May 7, 2013 meeting, for consideration by the Planning Commission. As we've done in the past when we review this, we basically go page by page, and if you have any comments on the draft language, that's time to discuss it. And then staff does have, in cases where some language is highlighted, we will go over that with you. We do have a insert that we included at your, on the dais, and it's additional language that, we can get to it, but I just would make sure that, you know, that we have an insert, and Leticia, maybe if you can just indicate where that goes, where it falls in the document.
It's actually Page Two. The first three paragraphs are the same, but then we inserted a section on High Fire Severity Zone. So that's what you will see on the material that's on the dais, it'll be different than what you got in your packet. Also, the map, Figure 3-1, High Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map, has also been revised from what you got, and-
That's different.
Yes, on Page Three, under the map, also on the handout on what we put on the dais, there's also a paragraph that is, was inserted since then. And then on Page Four, is the table that you got on, in your packet.
That's the same table.
Same table.
Basically, the reason why we've included the High Fire Severity Zone language was because it didn't have text that accompanied the graphic, so we wanted to make sure that tied in, and the same goes for the table that lists the large historic fires in California. We have a descriptor of, a description of that table. Again, just to really tie in the graphic with the text. So with that, that's, we can begin with the first page.
So as we've been reading through this thing, does, are there any comments on the first page?
I have nothing on the first page.
All right.
I do have something on second page.
Well, let's hear it.
I could say too-
The new second page or the old second page?
The old second.
Steve Hydorth, the fire chief, has reviewed this as well, and he's available as well.
That's fabulous.
It's probably a question for the fire chief, so.
Let's get him on down.
Does anyone else have something on Page One?
No.
My question is, in the second paragraph, it says, "First responder, provides first response services for Los Angeles County Fire Department and the U.S. Fire Service." Is that supposed to be the U.S. Forest Service? Is there something such as the U.S. Fire Service?
No, it's just Forest Service.
It should be the U.S. Forest Service, yeah. I didn't think there was anything called the U.S. Fire Service.
No.
The Forest Service might think that's what they are nowadays, but, so that should be corrected.
Okay, we'll make that correction.
Turn right, 451 on us.
Yep.
Well, that's how you know we're reading it, you know. I guess I'd like to say at the start that I thought this section was really good, actually. I had no major changes, a few little nitpicky things, but overall. And I was, I was kinda surprised when I looked at the map, because I thought that the fire, the zone went down to Grandview, 'cause I remember Bob Sears talking about that all the time.
I think what we did is that each local, we were given the map from the forest, it was from the-
The state of California.
The state, and we were given the opportunity to make amendments as we saw fit locally, and so we submitted it that everything north of Grandview was, we considered the very high fires severity zone.
Do we honestly believe that the fire will stop at Grandview? I mean, is that-
Well, what happened is, when we got the map, and if you sell the map in a larger form, it would, you'd have a neighbor here that would be in it, the neighbor next door wouldn't be in.
Sure.
And then the neighbor over there, so it was just a lot easier just to-
I understand, it's easy to legislate as far as fire codes on one side versus the other, as far as designing houses. But what would stop it from jumping Grandview? If it burns that far down, what would stop it from jumping Grandview?
I believe this is, when the state did this, they did it for all the front country.
Sure.
And they did it through aerial photographs, and with also with the aerial photographs, they were able to pick out the different vegetation. And so, the way this got drawn was actually from the terrain and then also the vegetation. So that's the way they were picking it.
Okay.
And that's how they picked it out.
Is it kinda like flood control, where the FEMA just doesn't orthographic, they just go and pick a, you know, topographic edge and they say, "Okay," and then you look and there's, you know, like, this is the flood zone, and then you see-
Yeah, I mean, they do it from, through the topographic, the maps and stuff.
Right.
But also, when they flew over it, they had their cameras or whatever, they can actually pick out different types of vegetation from their heat engines. So they could pick out the higher, you know, Manzanese and stuff, and that's how they did the whole thing.
Well, thank you.
I've just got one question. So who created this map?
Staff did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it was, it was in answer to, when the state provided it to us, then we amended it.
Okay.
So overall, the high fire zone is-
Above Grandview.
But I mean, it's a little bit more than it was before, I guess.
Uh, yeah.
The medium is gone.
Well, there was a little bit that went below Grandview before, but the amount that's added up above Grandview is probably more so.
Right, and that's into Arcadia there anyways.
Oh, you're right, yeah, so not, yeah, so there's just that tiny little bit.
Right.
Yeah, well, it just seems, it seems more sensible to me. I mean, that's what we have, so that's what we're working with, and-
All right. So then we got into Page Three. Is there any more questions on the rest of this?
I guess, I read this edition and it looks good as well.
All right, then, we're on. And these, on this historic table, it's not in chronological order, it's in what magnitude of what?
Structures burned, I mean. I think it's in structure losses. Structure losses.
Oh, I see, okay, sure. Wow.
That's interesting, some of the biggest square footages burned or acres burned.
No structures.
Least amount of structures burned.
And this, again, is from your, from your fire table, it's your-
Right. It can make you really nervous, how many fires of those apples on, that's really getting old.
Yeah. All right, then, on to Page Five.
Likewise.
There's a change from the original text, where in H13, it talks about providing more centrally located site for fire equipment in order to reduce response time, and there's quite a bit, there's a lot more verbiage, I don't know, is there any reason why that was expanded?
Is it H13? Let me read it. It said, "Continue to coordinate the provision of fire services with all public safety service providers and monitor their adequacy and responsiveness to community needs." And you have a-
Yeah, they're just, yeah, centrally located. Well, there's a change from centrally located to coordinate, and is that a change in our The original text says centrally located, and the other one just says coordinate the fire provision, the fire services, as if they're not necessarily gonna be centrally located anymore.
Which original language? I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Original general plan, 96.
Oh, the original.
Can you just read the whole thing, what it says?
It says, "Provide a more centrally located site for fire equipment in order to reduce response time in more densely populated canyon areas." And then, "Continue to coordinate provision, coordinate provision of fire."
Is it because that already happened?
And I think because it, the centrally located was problematic, because we have, you know, public safety service providers throughout, it's not that we would create one central area. So it seemed to be language appropriate in 1996, but not appropriate today.
So that was the reason that the committee changed that?
Right. And it was, we had the fire department review this language as well, and-
I just want to make sure it's not at oversight.
No.
Then on to Page Six.
In 2.6, I just thought the language there was a little hard to understand, I would just change it so that it would say, "Continue to require new development to provide adequate hydrants and require that reservoirs are available." Just how the word "require" that, "require," because I think the sentence was just a little hard to understand. You see what I'm saying, Danny?
Yeah, and require that reservoirs are available to accommodate.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
It was just a little-
That seems to be the same meaning, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's exactly the same meaning, but I think it's like, you can understand what the meaning is.
Leticia, I might need your help on this one, but we did highlight HD27, "Protect the wildland urban interface from fire damage by limiting further development in the canyon areas." I think, and Leticia, if you agree, I think we had concern because it seems broad, and yet we do allow development in the canyon zone or any other canyon, because it's, development is permitted.
Yeah.
It's really just an interpretation of what this policy is.
Yeah, it's, basically, if you have a legal lot in the canyon, and if it's a buildable lot, this isn't clear as to how you go about limiting development in the canyon if you have a legal lot, and the other issue would be also that the fire, say, fire department really doesn't have any purview in terms of limiting development. Perhaps the suggestion would be to put this in land use somewhere, but it seems like it's two issues here. I think one is that doesn't seem like the appropriate place for it, but- I think one is that doesn't seem like the appropriate place for it, but, and also, in terms of limiting development, it's not quite clear as to...
In the canyon zone, if a new lot is developed, doesn't it have to be an acre or something?
Not in the canyon.
Twelve thousand.
Not in the canyon, hillside, two acre minimum, but not in the canyon.
What's the rule about lots in the canyon?
Do you recall, Danny, I thought you had the minimum size for canyon?
I think it's seventy-five hundred.
Is it?
Maybe the same as R1.
Ask Councilmember Delmar what their thinking was there.
Well, my question, shouldn't that say canyon zone rather than canyon areas? That's the ambiguity.
Yeah, it's ambiguous.
And also, that's something you may want to consider depending on...
I think the intent here was to make sure that development in the sensitive area is carefully... I think that's what the intent is, but what this reads is, says, "Limit further development," which...
Let's hear from the people who wrote it.
What Danny says is...
Yeah, I mean, I think there was an intent behind it, but I think...
The intent was to make sure that we keep that interface and that when considering development there, that we want to take into consideration that fire interface. The chief and his crew are the ones who worked on that, on that part and that language. But I kind of agree with Gina, it doesn't make sense, so we need to somehow...
What if you changed limiting to carefully reviewing before approval, so it just got an extra level of scrutiny? I think we're just basically saying we want to get another, we want to take a look at it before we...
Yeah, Leticia, that's good, they hear you here, I can read it.
I'm thinking of some language that would say, "Protect the wildland urban interface by considering fire issues."
I would also suggest that...
Approving new...
That believing that this is the canyon, as it's so labeled, and the rest of the canyon areas that we have in this city, which are not in the canyon zone. I mean, I would think that this would apply universally to all of those, rather than just... This is canyon with a little c.
Yeah, this has canyon areas.
All right, yeah. This is canyon with a little c.
I think that's appropriate, actually.
Well, that's something I wanted to...
You said, "Protect the wildland urban interface by considering..."
Fire hazards.
Fire hazards.
How about that?
Before approving.
Yeah.
Before approving.
Yeah, before approving.
Is that synchronous with what you drafted, Leticia? What did you just write?
Those were strict, ain't a better word.
Close enough.
Development in canyon areas.
No, okay.
Basically the same.
Just means give it a second.
Or considering, when considering projects in canyon areas.
For considering projects.
Projects in canyon areas.
For considering projects.
Or while considering projects, while... When.
When, okay. I'm going to read it again. "Protect the wildland urban interface by considering fire hazards when considering projects..."
Consideration. Construction projects, right?
Why did projects is good enough? But we have considering twice, so I sort of...
You could say evaluating.
Evaluating, there you go. Thank you.
Okay.
I just don't, I just don't want that to make it seem like we're going to be limiting development because sometimes mitigating fire hazards could be a further development of the canyon. Now, taking out areas, it could be, you know, some building projects actually limit fire by the way they're built.
Well, yeah.
And people complain because they're bigger.
If you make it into a zero escape with nothing but concrete, there won't be a fire.
Well, still, but I don't want that to...
But there wouldn't be on the flatland either.
No, but I think, you know, I always take my inspiration from Bob Spears on these issues.
Sure.
Which is that you really need to think about the issues of fire when you're building in the canyon areas. And that's what we're talking about here, that whenever you're considering projects in the canyon area, you want to think, okay, fire. What, how is this, what are we going to do to make sure that this does not enhance the ability for fires to happen? I think that's kind of the issue that is important to address.
I think we got it.
But we also, just to be argumentative a little, we have a pool on the side of a hill in a hillside zone that's been used for fire prevention, so, I mean, that's...
Well, you have to remember that the planning commission did turn down that project.
But it was used as a loophole to approve it eventually.
Yeah, but it didn't, it wasn't the planning commission that approved it. It was the city council. And it didn't work, as you recall. There was a fire and there was a...
No, it actually did, it saved his house. And then he got a mudslide because all the brush burned.
Right, the mudslide, yeah. Which is why we didn't want to happen.
But then he mitigated that by putting deflection walls in, it's actually helped in the long run.
Let's go to page seven.
But we digress, right?
So I just want to ask a question, just for clarity for my own sake. HC42 says, "Maintain a fully operational emergency operations center." I just want to know how we do that and what it consists of.
I believe they're talking about our EOC that we have in the basement here.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
And it's functional now. It's just if we have something, we just pull the computers out and then...
Yeah, it's in our basement level.
We have the EOC down there.
Does that require maintenance or, I mean, update? Do you guys review it periodically or is it just kind of wrapped up and ready to go?
We have a drill down there usually once a year.
Yeah.
Grab new pencils and papers and shirts, but I think we just got some new computers for down there, some laptops, and then we bring in the different positions.
So you guys make sure that it's up and ready to go over here?
Myself and the city manager.
Great.
Staff does get periodically...
It's good to know.
Staff gets periodically trained, again, with drilling drills, and each staff members have specific roles that we play when, in an event of emergency.
Great, good. Hey, Jay.
Hi. Again, going back to the original general plan, they eliminated, what was the thought, eliminating identifying funds by way of a tree assessment district. Are we no longer trying to identify funds? It's original six point three, but it doesn't exist anymore in the current language. It's just a matter of the committee, would they, did they give up on the idea of trying to identify funds to help with brush and weed abatement? It's gone.
In nineteen ninety-six, they said to identify, and we have actually now have some ways to bring in that revenue, so we no longer have to identify it. We actually have done that.
So maybe, could we put something that says, "Utilize the funds that have been identified for this program?"
Yeah, sure.
Because it makes it sound like, I mean, if nobody knows it's there, they won't even go to look for it.
Well, if you have the, if you have in the implementation items a list of things to do, they will use the money that is available, I can guarantee it.
Yeah, nineteen ninety-six, they wanted to make sure that we put a program in place and we had the revenues. And so that, as we were doing the update, that was one that we could check off, that that's already been done, and we just kept it in there to make sure that we always use those funds.
So is that incorporated into one of these three policies? I don't see that that's been incorporated into these three policies.
But we already have, it doesn't have to be part of that.
Well, I think it should be mentioned.
I mean, it's part of, we have an ordinance and we have, we have...
So it's mentioned someplace else, but it's not mentioned specifically in a policy to...
You can add it, but...
But that's my suggestion.
The nineteen ninety-six one asked that that be done, so that was accomplished, so we don't have to have that in as a goal anymore, it's already been accomplished. So we have the ordinance, but you can say to utilize it, to continue. Or to continue, or you can even say to continue and strengthen, you can...
So it's no longer a goal, we don't have to even make mention of it?
We already have an ordinance that covers it.
But an ordinance that's accomplished the goal, is what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying, so we don't have to identify it anymore, but if you want to put a goal in there, you can, to keep it on task.
I think it should be there just to mention this, so we know that there are funds that have been identified and they're able to be used.
Just give the language and you can put it back in.
Yeah, I'm not making it an oversight, I'm just saying that if some stuff gets taken out, I'd like to know the thinking behind it, not that... And if it doesn't, doesn't seem to, if it's not redundant, then I think we should mention it again.
Sure.
The public or somebody reading the general plan should be able to, not have to dig through ordinances and stuff to know that that exists.
Yeah, that's fine.
See, you have some language on there, Danny?
Was that in regard to funding in regard to what, brush abatement?
Well, it has, it says here, I'm just carefully reading, "Vegetation trimming and removal of dead wood on public property and private properties where vegetation is creating a canopy over public rights away." You know, I'd have to look at the ordinance, I mean, I can bring, I can come back, but I think the idea of this is, as Councilmember Delmar mentioned, there are ordinances which address this, but I want to make sure that, you know... I don't want to just take this language and say, "Continue to identify funds," because just the content may not be correct based on what we've already adopted, so...
So can you compare it to the code and then let's come back?
I can compare it to the code and come back. That's okay with the commission?
That's fine.
Then rocketing on to page nine. Is that where we're at?
On page nine in the first paragraph, the word physiography is used.
Physiography.
Physiography, which I looked up in the dictionary because it means physical geography, really. I suggested, I recommend exchanging it for terrain, comma, vegetation, rainfall and runoff, which kind of covers what the issues are.
It will cause people to not have to look up physiography in the future.
Yes. I just, I don't, I'm always a fan of having words, I'm using words that the majority of people know what they mean.
Okay.
And I think terrain and vegetation kind of covers the issues that are at hand here.
And nothing else?
That's it.
Then on to debris basins.
There's a lot about debris, our debris basin heritage, really, this section, it was interesting.
Yeah, I wonder if the Sierra Madre Dam was originally built as a dam holding back water or just a, or debris?
Catch debris.
Yeah.
It's cracked.
Sure looks like it would hold back water.
I would think it was. Do we have any comments on page ten? Nothing from you, Danny? Okay, how about eleven? Nothing there. Twelve? Landslides. We have a mountain of K rails that I know we can... All right, page thirteen. And I have a question based on this little map. How does it, again, at Sierra Madre Boulevard, how does the, this flood plain take a severe left turn there or a right turn? Left turn and miss all that stuff on the other side of Santa Anita Court?
Just, you mean, just...
Why would it have been drawn like that? The inundation area.
I'm not sure.
Probably gravity.
Bruce, do you have a comment on that, or? So that's where the flood went.
It just, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
You mean the turn in there, yeah.
A large city curve.
That must be it, yeah. I, you know, I could just... That flow of water just doesn't...
I could check.
I, it's just, it's just a question.
I could check and get back to you.
Page fourteen.
Are you going to have public input eventually or no? Should I just get up when you guys are talking?
Well, let's have some public input right now.
I wanted to go back to that fire map since we still have the...
Well, that was a long time ago.
Here, I know, and I thought, I better get up and save something, but that's way back. I'm just curious, with the way the map's drawn, will that change the insurance rates that we would have to have since it's now brought down to such...
That map was already...
Brought down where the original hillside...
It won't change anything, because that map was already in existence, even though it wasn't in the plan. That map already was in existence in the city.
Okay, because I know that the hillside ordinance, we had wanted to bring it down to Grandview, and that was a huge debate way back when.
It's not changing things that already happened.
Great. And then also for the wording, maybe the intent for creation of wildlife corridors in the canyon, when it comes to that section of, when you were talking about building... I know you can't really ask for footage, but at least the wildlife corridors, I know that's in the wildlife section, but maybe it should also be put there in where you have that area for what to do with the wildlife. That was something that I was thinking when you guys were talking. And then the rest of it is nothing on the trees, I won't even comment.
Thank you. All right, it's closed, a public comment. All right, we're on page fifteen, fourteen. Where are we at?
Fourteen rounded the hill to fifteen.
Okay, good for us.
Sliding into seismic.
Let's get there. Okay. How about page sixteen, seismic?
Nothing.
I, I have just a very small change. The, in reference to a, it talks about nearest, for example, the second sentence, or the second paragraph. There are several active and potentially active faults located within or in the vicinity of the city. There are, according to the California Geological Survey, Geological Survey, the faults within Sierra Madre are not deemed as active or determined to be active. It's based on a threshold that's a standard. And so to say that there are several active and potentially active faults located within or in the vicinity, I think just to remove within or to say located in the vicinity of the city. The second sentence, following the nearest acta fault is a Sierra Madre fault zone, I would say the nearest fault is a Sierra Madre fault zone. And this gets a little bit technical, but the California Geological Survey currently is, has not published a map that determine that the fault, the Sierra Madre fault, is active within the city. They have a standard that shows that when a fault is determined to be active, it's when it's showing that there's surface displacement within the last eleven thousand years. And so the Sierra Madre fault is shown as displacement between fifteen, so it's greater than eleven thousand. And for those reasons, it's just, it's a small change, but I don't want this to appear as if it is active.
It should be accurate, according to the scientific evidence we have at the moment, right?
Does that mean our California earthquake authority charts goes down?
Probably not. It doesn't mean that you don't feel earthquakes, you just don't feel earthquakes.
Could I ask, what do we do with the Sierra Madre fault, the earthquake that we had, I think it was ninety-six? That was six point nine, that was the Sierra Madre earthquake?
Was it nineteen ninety-one or was it ninety-six?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, I don't know, we've had so many. But we were at the actual episode, epicenter.
It wasn't exactly that part of the fault?
No, but we were the epicenter, so that kind of leads me to think that, you know, we've got some trouble there. We were the epicenter.
I think, what was the public comment?
According to the language, it says that it was 1.5 miles east of Sierra Madre.
And Sierra Madre's three square miles, so, yeah.
No, I mean, from, from the city. That was the option of that fault, is what you were, that was.
Well, I, I know that there's a man that, from Kel-Tec or JPL, wherever, has come and spoke during the general plan, that's happy to come back and speak again regarding the fault zones, and, and so I think that's a good time to have him come back and give some input. Because those of us that lived through it would really question that wording right there. Thanks.
So this paragraph references 1991, was it 1991 or 1992?
It's 92.
So then there's an inaccuracy in that paragraph, if that's correct.
We'll circle that and just verify that change.
So I think, Danny, I think the, the direction would be, can you make this accurate with some reference source? Bring this paragraph back accurate to the facts that are known to us?
Well, I, I made changes that, just, for example, first paragraph, I mean, the first sentence, there are several active and potentially active faults located in the vicinity of the city. The nearest fault is Sierra Madre fault zone.
I think that's.
And that, that should cover it.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, would you, so acta faults located in the vicinity rather than within?
Right, in the vicinity, which means that.
And then you'll change the 91 to 92, if that's a fact, when the earthquake took place?
You might want to check down the magnitude, as long as we're.
Check the magnitude?
Yeah, I don't think it was 6.7.
No, it wasn't.
No.
I think it was five points.
Five point, okay.
It was a five.
I could check those over.
Still more quick.
It was a 5.8 magnitude is what it was, we just checked, and it was in June of 1991?
June of 1991.
Yes, June 28th, 1991.
Yeah.
It was 5.8.
Was it 91?
91.
Yeah, because the earthquake in 87 was about the same.
Right.
So then, just for the sake of accuracy, go ahead and put the full date in there, instead of saying 1991 with the full date.
That way we'll have it documented in our document.
Can't get more accurate than that.
No.
Well, you could say exactly the time, but.
That could be, sure. All right. What else you got?
Sheriff's order probably gone, if we have a big one on Santa Ana.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, that's not. Okay, then page 15.
17.
17.
17?
No, no, that was 16.
All right, 17. Nothing on that, how about page 18? On to page 19?
Yes.
You've got a highlighted thing there.
We have a highlighted. We just feel that this is a, we feel that it's an awkward goal to reference a different element in the general plan. I'll read it to you, it says, ensure that the land use element recognizes and addresses seismic threats for development in areas of the city located on or along a fault. It's a goal that really should just be in the land use element and not here.
Is it in the land use element?
No. But.
Then we failed.
It either needs to be identified as, it just, you know, general plan should not.
Can you just take out land use element, ensure that the city recognizes and addresses seismic threats for development areas located along a fault? It's better that the city recognizes it than the land use element recognizes it.
So is that going into the land use element?
It just becomes a much more, I think, a stronger goal, is that the city, not just in an element, but the city would recognize and address, you know?
Okay, but is that mean the city's gonna go, you might not want to build here because of the possibility that the building's gonna fall down because we, you're in an earthquake zone right here? I mean, is that what that, is that how that works?
I think the intent here, and then I think when you look at the policies following, there's, there's, there's policies that address, you know, development in or near a fault zone. So what it does is it takes, takes a policy that we have here and, and puts more specific.
Right, because if you had actual steps to take based on that, the steps would have to be in another part of the document.
Right.
Rather than here, so it makes more sense to.
So the, the steps to take, the steps are still here in the policies?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the policies are here, so we have the goals there and the policies.
Good fix.
Be in the same section as.
Yeah.
Page 20?
Back up one second. On two, minimal, or should we, should that be minimize loss of life?
Minimal loss of life?
Minimize loss of life?
I think minimize would make sense, yes.
I mean, because the original general plans had prevent the loss of life, now we're down to minimizing it or minimize. I think we're gonna qualify that, we should make it clear what we're doing.
I want to make sure that there's only a few people that actually die.
I think we were, what we were trying to do was follow the standard of minimize, and the use of the word is, is more of a policy. A goal is, is, you want minimal loss of life.
Oh.
That's the reason why the.
Oh, the goal is minimal loss, okay.
That's okay.
Again, on, on objective HZ10, close coordination of the objectives and policies of the seismic safety element with those of the land use element. It's not really an, an objective within a, within the general plan. Tisa, did you have alternate language that you suggested?
Um, no, it's actually. Yeah, the, the reason it was highlighted is, is because it's, again, it's another objective that this is, this is what you're doing. You're actually making sure that there is coordination by, you know, providing language here or changing the, either the seismic safety or the land use so that they do coordinate, so as an objective, it's awkward. It really doesn't function as an objective, because that is what you're doing. Your role is to make sure that these elements are coordinated with each other. So it's kind of describing the process here.
So if it goes away, does everything else on that page go away?
No, no, you, no, what, what needs to happen is really, there needs to be an objective that these policies can follow from. And this objective, this language doesn't do that. This language is just saying the elements need to be coordinated.
Do you have a suggestion?
I've got a full document here, I'm kidding, what suggestion might be? It's 28 pages.
Um, yeah, I, I do have a, I do have a suggestion, if, if you'd like. Assess viability of development based on seismic safety considerations.
Sounds good.
So again, assess viability of development based on seismic safety considerations. It seems like that the policies would follow.
Rather than safety elements?
Rather than what's written.
Which makes more sense.
Say it one more time.
Assess viability of development based on seismic safety considerations. Or consideration, or considerations, either way.
These seem to fall, these, these, the policies seem to follow from that pretty much, so.
Denise, are you good with that?
This is a long time ago, but I think if memory serves me right, we covered this prior to the land use. And when we were going through this, we wanted to make sure that they, we did coordinate. I think those were kind of just notes.
It was more of a note to the committee to remember to do it, rather than an actual policy.
And I think the other one was, you know, ensure that this was in the land use element, was this a note to us?
So you're okay with, with Tisa's change?
What she's saying is perfect.
Great.
Yeah. Because we've since done the land use element, and now it makes sense.
I just have two changes on HZ10-2, where it says, begins, investigate the limitations on the location of new or altered residences and critical sensitive and high occupancy facilities in areas near active faults. And I would just take out the perends, because again, the Sierra, you, you maintain near active faults, and, you know, there could be many different active faults once deemed active.
Right.
And I just don't want to close that to just one. And then HZ10-3, the same thing, just to remove what's in perends, e.g., the Sierra Madre fault zone.
Because it more limits it than.
It limits it, and, you know, technically, it's not considered
Right.
active. And I have to tell you too, that, you know, geologists are debating right now whether the Sierra Madre fault zone is active or not active. But the California Geological Survey is, is, they, they put out a map, when they publish it, then, then it is, if they do so, yeah.
Yeah, well, if you just leave it big, then if you just say acta faults, then there they are, if they are.
On HZ10-4, just one other change. To investigate requiring a thorough subsurface fault investigation be conducted for any proposed habitable structure on private property in close proximity of, and I would say, of an active fault zone, not the Sierra Madre fault zone.
I remember when we were working on the One Carter project, they had to, didn't they have to do trenching up there?
They had to do trenching as part of.
They had to do trenching up there because they weren't sure whether there was actually a fault right up there.
Correct.
So that, if you.
Anything like that would be required, I mean, any, any development would require trenching to? Or any sort of geological study for?
Yeah.
So even the single-family house is gonna have to investig, do investigative?
We've had, we've had the requirement for a soils report for some time.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On a single, single-family house, which is basically this, I mean, it's, if there's a fault zone, I mean, if it's called out on your, you know, if the fault runs through your property, then, you know, you'd want to do trenching anyway.
Yeah. Because I remember there was some question about, about that, where exactly was there a fault right there?
Okay.
Does that come through a state law, though, or a city ordinance?
No, it's our city ordinance, state doesn't require it. It's usually the county or the city that requires. The code, the state code gives you a minimum bearing value that you can use on, on soil, which is horrific. Uh, 21.
I was just wondering, what's the, are there any, what are the ordinances attached to encouraging seismic review of buildings?
Are, you're saying are, are, what is your question?
What's, what are the ordinances attached to this encourage seismic review of, you know, that's a policy for an objective, but it's, is there anything attached to that?
No, I mean, we would have to come up with an implementation as to how we would carry out this policy.
Is that of existing buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I.
Of existing?
Well, that's what.
Which one, what number is that?
11.
HZ11, 11-2.
Vulnerable buildings that are, I mean, I'm just thinking, someone knock on your door?
Encourage them.
Say, is there some ordinance that, you know, that would encourage them in a, in a, in a very?
But doesn't, doesn't the county require seismic retrofit on buildings of a certain age, or masonry buildings?
There was, there was a requirement, you know, that the county had for unreinforced masonry buildings.
Did that fall off, did that, did that go well?
It didn't.
I think there was a date that you had to accomplish.
There was a date, yeah, and that was, that was, that was a few years, a few years ago.
Many years ago, actually.
Right. I, I think, I think it was really, this policy was created simply to, simply to, to make buildings safer.
Well, it's because it was, it's the objective that's before it. This one really has to do with kind of notifying the, the public, doing the PR, encouraging people to do seismic reviews that they're close to the fault, so it just kind of falls into that whole objective. A way to lessen or minimal loss of life, and minimizing that would be for people to do, you know, a seismic view of their buildings. Just to encourage it, we can't make them do it, we don't have an ordinance that does it, but
That's why I was asking.
we could encourage it.
I mean, there's promote, encourage, and then there's require, and then
Right.
I would assume the require has ordinances, and then someone's knocking on your door and says, you can either do this or pay this huge fine, or where you really have no choice, and then the person's going, oh dear, what do I do?
Right, so we just, we're just encouraging them
Okay.
to do that.
Well, I got a question on the first part of that, HZ11, minimize to the extent? Is that greatest extent to the smallest extent, is there, shouldn't have to be some? It's just the extent possible, so there's gotta, should be greatest extent, greatest extent possible of the loss of life?
You could include greatest extent possible.
Rather than just extent?
I think it's assumed.
Well.
Yeah.
I don't know unless you don't like your baby or something. I think it's house on fault.
Could be a loophole.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Page 22?
Yes, yeah, let's do 22. I gotta say that all this stuff is a great objectives. Most of this is covered in the Uniform Building Code. And nothing can be built without it conforming to that code. So, great objectives.
As long as we're not conflicting with the, what is already required.
But you can't, I mean, this is, the code is so stringent on this stuff that, anyway. We're on to page 23?
Yeah.
I have no comments on this section.
Okay. We just have a typo on page 23.
Lots of blow and go guys up at your place? Lots of blow and go guys up at your place?
Yeah.
A typo on page 23, just the first paragraph, the last sentence, describe the noise, it should be in terms, so not stems.
Quali, is it qualitative terms or quantitative? That first paragraph?
Where are you at?
First paragraph, page 23.
Qualitative terms, describe the noise.
Qualitative or quantitative? Oh, qualitative terms. And what's your question?
Well, uh, never mind.
It's a statement of universal principle. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. 24?
Yeah, 24, oh wait, no, that's not 25, mine's not 25, actually. Well, it's, it's, it's the last paragraph of 24 and the first of 25, I was thinking that we should include the Kensington, the. I was thinking that we should include the Kensington, the assisted living facility. Would that be considered a sensitive receptor for noise? Seems to fit in that category, maybe.
It can, yes.
So it has rest homes, long-term medical or mental care facilities? I don't know, maybe not because they're all mostly going to be elderly people whose hearing isn't that good already.
Oh, now you're labeling.
I've been in assisted living facilities and most of the people do not hear very well, so it may not be a sensitive receptor. Everyone's TV is turned up to, you know, number a hundred and...
Yeah, that's, that's my thought.
So, yeah, I mean, maybe it's not, actually, so I'm taking it back.
Are you taking, are you really taking it back?
Yeah, I am, actually.
Would this pertain to the Kensington now, what's this is on?
Well, that was my question, and I was saying maybe not because they're all old and mostly don't hear very well.
And I don't think they're mental, but medical care, right?
Yeah, it's, I, I...
Board and care facilities are considered sensitive land use.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, the idea is, is, are they, is the use a sensitive noise receptor?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sure we'll hear from the people behind that.
Yeah. I just have a general comment about the whole issue of noise, and it came up when they were making the improvements at Alverna. And it was about, and it's come up on more than one occasion, which was about, the city has a, a, like a decibel limit, but it doesn't include a length of time issue around noise. And, and, um, so that if you hear, and I think it may have addressed this a little bit, which is like if it's an occasional loudness that is different than it being a continual loud at that same amount. It's the quantitative, it's the quantitative of, of how long it's going on.
Aren't we allowed to do construction from seven to seven?
Yes, but I'm thinking about other, other...
That's noise, I mean, that's, that's the improvements at Alverna.
That's construction noise, but there's other kinds of noise so that if you, I mean, one of the noise things that's...
Like the contractors yelling at each other?
One of the noise things that's come up is like the, the issue of having a...
The words they use?
Generator when the power goes out for the cell towers, right? Which is really noisy and we've made them put it inside.
What about when all the, the wind knocks all the power lines down? Everybody has their little portable generators running all night long.
Right, yeah, so there's these issues of, it's sort of frequency and duration of noise.
I don't need one, I got a generator. Ran all night long.
And that's something that people have complained about, you know, so that if, if the noise, if the noise level is whatever it is, I can't remember what the limit is in Cerro Madre. Duration matters. And I don't know if that's addressed in here at all. And I don't know if there's, if there is a way to address that, but that's something that people have complained about to us.
It, it could be a, a policy that we, we explore or, or explore limits on the duration and frequency of excessive noise.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just, I, I don't really have an answer to the question I'm asking, but it's an issue that's come up to us.
Right, I understand.
I don't know if anyone else remembers those, when we used to talk about it, but...
Oh, yeah. There's, there is concern, but our...
Doesn't HC-fourteen solve that?
Danny, was that that same study that the state had us do with the decibels? Where we placed different collectors around town, different people's yards to, to measure the noise? That was in something that we had to do. I forget, we, we did so much to save the town money, but I can't quite recall all that we... Because it's been a while since we've done the job.
Fourteen solves, addresses your issue in the macro.
Fourteen what?
Yeah, maybe it does.
HC-fourteen, maintenance of the quiet residential character of the city, free from excessive noise from transportation or fixed source generators.
There you go.
Then I've got a whole bunch of mitigate noise impacts, identify controlled noise levels.
But I think, and I can't remember exactly what the issue was, but it seemed like the current city code that we had did not address this part of the issue of noisiness. I wish I could go back and look at the minutes of the meetings or something where it was discussed, where... Were you here when that happened, Danny? I can't...
I was, I'm interested, but...
You kinda remember, do you remember what I'm...
Well, it was, it was, it was the, you know, the occasional wedding.
Yeah.
That would occur, and, and then the, the music that emanates from...
And the sports activities.
Yeah, it's great children, you know?
Yeah, I, they've cut down on the membership of weddings though. I mean, I don't know if they're doing as many weddings, but I don't hear the noise that I used to...
I mean, you talk about frequency and duration, they've, they've made mitigations, you know?
I don't hear it like I used to. I hear this, I hear the, the sports stuff, which is like, okay, that's gonna go on, but it's the ten o'clock or nine fifty-four when they're playing the music on a Saturday night. I don't hear that now like I used to.
They were, you know, they were giving caps on the number of weddings and then...
Yeah, exactly.
How many per month and all of that, so...
And, and they had, and there were rules about how it had to be in the...
Right. And hours.
You know, the city holds...
It was just good because they used to, you used to go to like...
Dinner's over there as well.
New bride, they had to rent all that place, and they were renting it out every week.
Can we go on to twenty-five?
Yeah. I have nothing else at all.
Okay. So we're finished? Anybody else have a comment? What about this chapter four stuff? I'm gonna miss out on all that.
Oh, because...
You can come and sit in the audience and, and comment.
I appreciate it.
We would, we would like that.
All right.
You do have one more meeting.
I know. Okay. So we finish this?
Yes.
At this point. Our next is oral communication. This is an op-, this is an additional opportunity for any person to address the planning commission on an item that is not on the agenda. When addressing the planning commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than four minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Is there anybody who would wish to comment on anything that we haven't talked about yet? Apparently not. All right, this is an opportunity now for the planning commission to direct comments towards the development services staff.
Are we having a meeting, what's our meeting scheduled on July?
I think it's July third, which... July third and July seventeenth, and...
So we'll be in here meeting while they're having a party next door in the parks?
Yes.
We could ask you now if you think you wanna either reschedule...
I will not be here July seventeenth.
Well, we, we have had a meeting on the third. You can hear the music out there. But I could, I could take a poll outside of this and see who's in town or not, if there's a quorum issue.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here the third, but I'm on the seventeenth.
I guess the music will keep it lively.
Won't be anybody else to interfere.
Do we have stuff scheduled for the third?
Cut, general plan.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Which I think will be, it'll be, you would complete the review of the documents, but we have things to return back to you that...
Can we do it outside on the green?
Yes.
And is this with development services staff now?
Well, can I just note for the record that we received, I believe each of us individually, a letter from Madre de la Rosa. And since we all received the letter, it should probably, my sense is, should be included in the minutes of this meeting. I don't need to read the whole thing, but it's dated May thirtieth, 2014. Mine addressed to me saying, "We're very concerned about recent mischaracterizations of our proposed plans for surplus land at Madre de la Rosa because the public needs accurate information to form their opinions, et cetera, that they've updated their website, and that the information in this letter was released to the media." So if anybody's interested in reading this letter, we can make that letter available with the link to the updated information on their website. I think everybody got the letter individually, so I would like to include that in the minutes.
All right then, now's an opportunity for the development services staff to speak to us.
Your next meeting is June nineteenth, and also, we will have a, after June nineteenth, we will have a vacant seat on the planning commission. And so we are currently seeking applications to serve on the planning commission, and I put that out there for the public and I put that out there for the planning commission. If you know anyone who would be interested...
Do we have candidates currently, or is it no one submitted?
We don't have, we do have a, a, a candidate.
A candidate.
Right, and we do, we do need more for it to, we need a couple more in order for it to be, you know, taken to the city council for their consideration. Just a rule that, that must be at least three...
So we'll, we'll operate one person short until that happens.
We'll be operating one person short until that's filled. So I would just, you know, ask that if you have any recommendations, I'm happy to speak to anybody just about what, what's involved and, you know, applications are available at City Hall, and I believe it's online. That's all I have.
Excellent, then this meeting is adjourned.